The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Well, hi and welcome to I on Oshkosh. I'm not Cheryl Hens or Melanie Bleckel. Melanie is taking a break from the show and Cheryl is running for the Oshkosh Common Council and we are doing shows dealing with the Oshkosh Common Council and so she's taking a break from hosting. She actually will be on the show today and she'll be interviewed as a candidate. I'm joined by co-host Ben Schneider II. Ben is a member, as you know, of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education and we will not be talking about school board issues, but he will be joining me in interviewing the council candidates. In our first 15-minute segment, we're going to be joined by Mike Norton and in our second segment, we'll be joined by Joe Youngworth. In our third segment, we'll have Brian Peschall, the incumbent, and then our own Cheryl Hens will join us in the fourth segment. So why don't we start off with Mike Norton? Mike, thanks for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Tony.
All right. Why are you running for the Oshkosh Common Council?
I am running basically because I felt for a number of years that the city leaders, the city common council, and I think some of the department heads of people have not been concentrating on things that they need to be concentrating to make our city go, meaning bringing either more business to the city to make it grow that way, and also the street problem. I've always heard a problem about problem of we have the worst streets in the valley. And thirdly, I'd like to return something that council member O'Malley had and try to, you know, do, reach out to more of the community, have listening sessions and such.
I am going to ask you a series of yes/no questions. Before I get to that though, many of our viewers will know you are currently on the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors.
Yes, I am.
If you were to be elected to the Oshkosh Common Council, would you step down from the county board?
No, I would do what Mark Harris does now and a couple of the current in the City of Nashville where they seem to don't have a problem, where they both do the city council and county board, and I'd probably do a term of each and see what happens a year from now.
All right. Thank you. Let's ask a series of yes/no questions. You know, the city council has spent a lot of money on downtown Riverside Park Amphitheater. Should taxpayer dollars be used in that project?
Well, I was very illiterate at first because I don't think it was the best thing to do, but as someone pointed out, you know, if it's both a joint public-private venture, I guess I would support that.
Okay.
But I don't think that's, I think there's much more we should do downtown. I don't think the only answer to downtown is building more economies or more apartments.
Right. But you would use tax dollars for that amphitheater? It is a public-private partnership?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. The council, as you know, currently waived the bid for CR Meyer so that they got a contract to build bathrooms and concession stands. If you had been on the council, would you have voted to waive that?
Probably not. I probably would ask a few more questions.
Okay. The Pollock Pool, you're a lifetime Oshkosh guy, right? So you know the Pollock Pool's been around for a long time. Very costly to maintain. Do you think it should be closed?
Well, I think it should be closed, but I think it kind of indicates how the county members in the past and the city departments have kind of let that place go and, you know, hopefully, I'm at odds with what to do in the future because the county board and the county parks hopefully will be meeting with the school district and do something jointly at our county beach facility.
But it sounds like, given the budget constraints right now, you probably might, or you might vote to close it, it sounds like.
I would close it and maybe reallocate the money, some of it, to trying to join up with the county beach facility.
Okay. Smoking in restaurants, as you know, has been a very divisive issue. Does Mike Norton support banning smoking in restaurants?
No, I think businesses should be able to do what they want to do in their own business.
Okay. As you know, we're going to elect a mayor in Oshkosh for the first time in about 50 years, but the mayor will not have veto power. Should the mayor have veto power?
Well, I wish we had a very more stronger mayor. I think we should have had a full-time mayor and should have veto. I wish we would have been much stronger than what was passed.
All right. The Leach Company, Federal Signal left Oshkosh. The city of Appleton passed a resolution putting a boycott on purchasing their products. Should Oshkosh pass such a boycott?
I could, wouldn't mind passing such a boycott now, but I think, you know, I've heard things that are other reasons why they left other than health and healthcare costs. I think we should have done something to prevent them from leaving in the first place.
Okay. But you would probably vote for boycott?
Yeah, I could support that.
Okay. You're active in labor issues, I know. Suppose there was a strike that you supported and you're a member of the Oshkosh Common Council, would you walk in a strike?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. We have a five-minute rule in the Oshkosh Common Council. Should it be maintained?
Um, yes, I think there should be flexibility as long as they're not saying the same thing meeting after meeting.
Okay. Currently, citizens can't address agenda items during that five minutes that they speak. Should they be able to address agenda items?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I don't think, why should the council members, you know, not let them be criticized after what they've done?
All right. I'm going to ask you one more question then turn it over to Ben. What do you think is the major issue facing the city?
I think how are we going to increase revenue, or revenue meaning by jobs and economic base of this community. We've lost Leach and other places. I think that's the key. I know there are a lot of different issues out there. You know, some council member or council candidates say quality of life issues and that, but you need to have the tax base, property taxes to pay for that, and I think that's, I think that's most important.
All right. Let's turn it over to Ben Schneider. Well, how do you increase the revenue in the property tax base as a member of the common council?
A common council? I think you have to look ways of attracting business here. Now, if I'm on a, I'm on a nonprofit board that has its own business incubator, has built up businesses, I think the city can find, try to find creative ways to attract businesses. I'm not talking about the big businesses of, like, I can't remember, the Boeing industry, but I think small industries, you know, 20 to 50, 100 employees who pay anywhere from $10 to $15 an hour jobs and keeping them in the city and maybe attracting them. I think that's what you have to do.
But how does the city travel with the tax incremental finance districts? I mean, do you support things like that?
If it's for truly for areas that will, if it's for bringing businesses that will bring real jobs, I'm not, I'm not so much for TIFs for apartment complexes and for, you know, the infamous one downtown. It has to really demonstrate to me that it is going to help, not clean up, but light an area and will bring income other than, you know, the property tax for paying for those improvements to the city.
Okay. Ben?
The city tax has just went up 5.7%, and some would argue that's a couple butterburgers worth. Would you have supported that tax increase?
Well, I tell you too, I'm not really sure. I'm going to be, I think you have to look within the budget. I'm more concerned about the county board budget. I voted against that. I think you have to look at, you have to justify why the increase is, and I know that's probably a vague answer, but if it's maintaining the safety and the roads and the health of the citizens, yeah, but I'd have to look more closely at the budget. But I think it is concerned. I mean, you know, every, I think it's kind of, you know, to say butter burger, I think is kind of not, kind of disrespectful to people who have to pay the property taxes. You have to be concerned about that.
Yeah, just so I didn't say that. I was, I was being facetious.
I know. I know you didn't say that.
Because I think taxes went up a lot more than a few butterburgers, especially when you add up all the different elected bodies combined, it was over 6% on your base number. What is a reasonable tax increase? What is a reasonable property tax increase?
A reasonable? I don't know if it's reasonable. I think you have to make sure that you are, you know, revenues are matching what you need to spend the money on, and you have to make sure that you are not just frivolously or, not frivolously, but you're not, you know, what you're spending for is what it's supposed to go for. So I don't know what, you know, I think three to four would probably be, and that's what the rate inflation is. You try to keep it lower than that, but I think more than that, you probably be out of line.
Well, the county tax rate went up, what, 6 point something percent?
Um...
I know it was, well, did you, did you support that?
No, I didn't, I did not vote for it. For a couple of things that were in the budget and also some side issues about how we put the budget together, you know, there's been controversy about us reserves and some people don't like that, I don't like that, so that's basically why I voted a couple of times.
Does there seem to be one part of, now, you suggested you haven't looked at the Oshkosh budget very closely, but I know you're familiar enough with it to say, is there a part of that budget where there seems to be some blatant waste?
Blatant waste?
Do you think the city is wasting money somewhere?
Um...
Or is the council overall responsible?
I think the council overall is responsible and...
You just think they're not doing enough to create jobs in the community?
Well, I think, yeah, that, that's one thing you have to bring, yeah. I mean, that's one big thing. You know, to justify, you know, more firemen, that's one reason why I think they said they increased it. If you increase the size of the city, you know, you have to have decent fire protection, but you are told that if you bring those people in the city, that helps bring out an income through property taxes.
Ben, we got time for one more question before we get a final statement for Mike. You got one more, one last one?
Oh, yield that to you.
Okay. Well, actually, now that, in our little repartee here, Mike, we can get to your closing statement. Why don't you look into camera three and tell the citizens of Oshkosh why they should vote for Mike Norton in the February 15 primary?
Hello, my name is Mike Norton. I want your vote for Oshkosh City Council in February and then later in April, because I think we need someone who is a lifelong resident of the city, who understands the city and what it needs of the city for the next two years, and who will reach out to the community and truly listen to them because of what I have done doing, being a member of the county board.
If people want to contact you, Mike, how can they do that?
I have an email address, mjn304@hotmail.com. I have a telephone number. The county website has all the information.
Okay. By the way, on the county board, you have been producing documents, notices, when you've gone on educational trips and so on. If you got elected to the Oshkosh Common Council, would you produce some kind of newsletter or something for the city?
I would do that. I would try to work with whether media, although they would want me to have some kind of newsletter.
Yeah. And you also said, like councilman Matt O'Malley, you'd have town hall meetings?
Oh, yes. I mean, I've had over county board, unfortunately, I've had like three of them. I had one in July, I was only, I and another county board supervisor were the only ones who were there. I would hope the city council would bring a whole lot more people.
All right. We want to thank Mike Norton for taking the time to visit I on Oshkosh. We're going to take a break for a public service announcement. When we get back, Ben Schneider and I will be joined by candidate Joe Youngworth. He's running for the second time. Stay with us. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across a border.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stayed in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to I on Oshkosh. Tony Palmieri here, and I'm joined with Ben Schneider, and he and I are interviewing candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. We're joined now by council candidate Joe Youngworth. As many of you will recall, Joe ran for the council a year ago, did not win, but did very well, and he's running again. Joe, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
You betcha. Thank you for having me.
Why are you taking another stab at the council?
Well, you know, there are a lot of issues that were important to me last year. A lot of the issues, of course, are important to me this year. One major concern to me is the amount of spending that is going on in the city. I am not against spending, just not for spending it on foolish things or things we don't need. You know, they're more of wants. I think the city needs, I think the city council needs someone on there that's going to bring a common sense approach to politics in this city. And I think the average guy needs a voice, the cobblestoner, the Joe Lunch Buckets, two percenters. The Northwestern's got a lot more, I'm sure, but, and I believe I'm one of those candidates, and that's why I'm running again. There are a lot of important issues coming up, and I want to be part of the decision process.
And I should say that Joe and Ben Schneider are both 33 years old, proving, I guess, that you're never too young to be a cobblestoner. Is that fair?
No way.
Okay, that's right.
Born and raised a cobblestoner.
All right. That's very good. Let's talk about some of these projects, Joe. Do you approve the use of taxpayer dollars for the Riverside Park Amphitheater?
Um...
Sounds like no.
No, no. It, I think they put the cart before the horse on that.
Okay.
I think it's, it's going to be a very beautiful structure, and for the amount of money that's going to be spent on it, it better be, you know.
Right, right. They waived the bid for CR Meyer, gave them a contract to build bathrooms and concession stands, which, if you had been on the council, would you have voted to waive that bid?
Absolutely not. That, to me, is uncalled for. That is, in my opinion, an irresponsible vote that those council members made, because you've got to run this city like a business. And if you were going to go build a garage and you want to get the best bang for your buck, you're going to go around and get bids from other, but since, no, it's not good.
All right. Want to run you through a couple of topics here, then we'll get to Ben.
Sure.
Pollock Pool, should that be closed?
No, no.
Would you spend taxpayer dollars to keep that open?
I would.
Okay. Cigarette smoking in Oshkosh, as you know, has been in restaurants controversial. Would you vote to ban smoking in restaurants?
No.
Okay. As you know, we're going to be electing a mayor for the first time in 50 years. However, this mayor will not have veto power. Should the mayor have veto power?
I think if we're going to have a mayor, this is a watered-down version of the Frank Towers proposal, I believe. Yes, I think the mayor should have veto power. I think this is a step in the right direction that we do get to elect our mayor.
All right. Leach slash Federal Signal left Oshkosh, a lot of jobs lost. Appleton responded to that by passing a boycott on buying Federal Signal products. Would you vote for a boycott?
Sure.
You would? Okay. Let's say a group of workers at a company went on strike and you support them. You support the strike. You think they have a good cause, and you're a member of the Oshkosh Common Council. Would you walk the picket line with these guys?
I've been asked that question quite a bit in other forums and stuff like that, and I would. If that is something that I feel strongly about, I'm going to go out there and support those people who supported me.
You'll do it. Okay. We have a five-minute rule for citizen statements. Should we maintain that or get rid of the five-minute rule?
Well, I think we can tweak. I think that's something that we can tweak. I think we need some structure on that, and, but there's other things I'd like to tweak when it comes to the council meetings also.
All right. Currently, for reasons I don't understand, citizens can't address agenda items during those citizen statements. Should they be able to?
That is one of the things I would tweak. Yes, they should. I think the dialogue between when the person asks a question and when they get their answer, even that same night, is entirely too long.
All right. And finally, before we turn it over to Ben, what do you think, what does Joe Youngworth think is the major issue facing the city?
Spending.
Spending.
Yep.
Spending priorities.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I'm all for nice things in Oshkosh, but with an increase in our taxes and the budget situation and the tax cut and the monies we're getting from Madison being cut, we've got to take care of the things that we have now.
All right. Let's turn it over to Ben. You just touched on that spending issue. The city taxes just went up 5.7%. Would you have supported that tax increase?
No.
What would you have supported?
Well, you know, you got to look at some cuts. I mean, let's face it, shared revenue was cut. We need to look at departments within this city. I think we should have a group come in, do a survey on the whole, on every department, and then figure out where we are going to cut, because if we're going to continue to do what we're doing, we've got to find a way to cut stuff without adding fees and stuff like that. So we need an overhaul in this to find out if we're up to par with our police department, our fire department, which I support fully.
But I asked this to Mike Norton in the previous segment. Is there a part in that budget, Joe, where you see blatant waste, other than the downtown spending?
Okay, yeah.
Is there anything in there that you think is, are we blatantly wasting money in that budget?
Well, healthcare is, I mean, I don't know if it's waste, but I don't know if we're seeing it all through. I wonder if we could team up with other cities, with other municipalities, to try to get a better rate for these people. I don't want to cut their benefits, you know? No one wants to cut things that they have already, but I think we've got to find a more unique way of saving money or maybe not, just maybe not spending it at all, you know? That's, that's one way of saving it.
Okay. So you're saying there's one way, you don't have to always necessarily cut something, you could just not spend it to begin with, like the band shell property and the ancillaries that go along with that?
Absolutely. That band shell, I mean, we're going to have to see, depending on what all happens, we're going to have to see this go through now, you know? It's erect, we had the million dollars. This, if I could real quick and say...
Sure.
This band shell is a great gift. Believe me, it's a great gift by the Leach family, but it's like me giving you guys two Super Bowl tickets and saying, okay, here you guys, I'm Mr. Good Guy here, here's two tickets, but now it's $2,500 for you to get down there and airfare and everything else. It's a great gift, but the council are the people that approved the other spending over there. You look at what Waterfest has right now, and they've had for 10, 12 years or better, just having the band shell and some green space, I think they would have been happy as heck to have just that. But no, we've got to go in and spend millions of more dollars on that, and that, we didn't need that. I understand the cap issue, you know, down there, but I mean, that's a million-dollar piece of property alone that the city paid for, and this all went too quick as far as I'm concerned. I think it could have been planned out better.
Your father used to be mayor, correct?
Correct.
I believe years ago in the early 90s, he was referred to as Joe Lunch Bucket.
Absolutely.
And I presume based on your issue or your positions that you're a cobblestoner. How do you feel about those names to describe yourself and your father?
Well, yeah, then like I said in the opening, there were the two percenters, the Joe Lunch Bucket and the cobblestoners, but I, and the two percenters, they say it's, you know, 2% of the population, you know? I just wonder what the other 98% of the people are. I don't understand that. You know what? It's a compliment to me. Call me Joe Lunch Buckets. I still have, I still have pins from when my dad had them. Oh, jeez. Call me whatever you want. I mean, that's fine. If, I'm proud to be a Joe Lunch Bucket and a cobblestoner, and I think that's one of the nicest things the Northwestern's printed about me.
But Mr. Rickman, who, you know, far be it from me to defend Mr. Rickman, but I think what he seems to be saying is there's an element in this city that seems to be against everything, right? And I think he's talking about the Esslingers and the Peschalls and the Youngworths.
Sure.
So if we were to, if we were to ask you guys, we know what you're against, what are you for?
Well, I am for the city to grow.
Without spending money, though. How do you grow without spending money?
No, no, you can do that. You don't have to, I mean, you've got to spend money, but it's the amount of money that we're spending and on certain things. On this band shell, we're going to have, it's going to be five, six million dollar deal. Granted, some of that money is private donations, but we've got to take care of what we have now before we start building new things, like an aquatic center. I'm not for an aquatic center in the city of Oshkosh. I would like a nice pool for these people, for kids, adults, families to go and have a good time. Omros, you know, spent seven-plus million dollars on their aquatic center, and they're struggling. They're going to have no capital improvements for 10, 11 years or seven, eight years because of the monies they spent on that. I'm not against progress, and you'll have, the Northwestern's going to tell you I am. I am not against progress at all. It's where you spend that money. You know, we've got city streets that are horrendous as far as I'm concerned.
Or would you, is it safe to say that you're not against progress, but you're against the method to achieve that progress with the extraction of taxpayers' dollars in the form of a levy increase?
You know, what they have to do, I think what we need to do is sit down and get the people in the city more involved. Maybe, I hear that there's a little initiative to get Pollock Pool reopened. As a matter of fact, I had a gentleman stop me on Wednesday and said that there's a possibility of getting something going, getting the community involved with it, I think.
But you said that the city should be run a little bit like a business, right?
After, it should be run like a business.
Now, you're a small businessman, right? Ben Schneider is your businessman, right? Isn't it a principle of business that you got to spend money to make money?
Oh, absolutely.
So what would you say to the argument that that money we're spending downtown is a good investment? It's going to bring money into the city. Isn't it going to bring a lot of people downtown that normally would not be there, and they'll end up spending a lot of money on other things while they're there? Isn't that good?
Oh, I think it's good, but I mean, this downtown issue has been going on an awful lot. They should have thought of this 15, 20 years ago before way out there where the Shopko's and the Walmarts and everything like that out on the Frontage Road was. I mean, I remember years ago trying to bring a Shopko downtown or, I mean, thank goodness for some of the businesses that we do have down there, the Kits and Files and things like that, but the people are going to dictate whether or not, the business owners are going to dictate whether or not it's a good idea. If people think it's a great idea to be down on Main Street because their business would flourish and it would be great, they'd be down there right now. And I just don't see, I don't see the thought process and just, let's revamp downtown just to revamp it. I mean, you've got to give these people initiatives, I don't know what that is. I, I don't, you give them tax breaks, you give them this, you give them that, you know, to get people down there.
Ben, you got one more before we go to Waterfest?
Yeah, how common do you feel is the Common Council?
How common, well, I don't think it's very common at all, to be honest with you. And I'm, I'm not taking a, a jab at, at these people, but you can tell, I mean, the 5-2 vote is what it is. Paul and Brian don't vote the opposite of the Fab Five just to do it. No, they believe in what they're doing, they believe that this is the right thing to do for the city. Paul and I have, have disagreed on, on issues in the past, Brian and I have disagreed on issues in the past. But it, it's not as common as I'd like it to be.
Joe, in our remaining time, I should look into camera three. Tell the citizens of Oshkosh why they should vote for Joe Youngworth on February 15th.
Thank you, well, my name is Joe Youngworth, as you know. And a reason for you to vote for me is I am gonna try to bring, um, try to bring some common sense onto this city council, a voice for the average person. There are a lot of tough decisions to be made in this city in the near future. I am not involved in any special interest groups or anyone chirping in my ear. I'm gonna work for the people in this city, the taxpayers, and do the best thing that it's right for the city of Oshkosh.
Joe, if people want to reach you, how can they do that?
They can reach me on my home phone, which is 231-8620, or email me at youngworth@sbccglobal.net.
All right, we do have that up on the screen, and you want to say something about the League of Woman Voters?
Okay, um, I heard today that, that maybe the possible date for the League of Woman Voters forum is the 27th. Unfortunately, I will be out of town that day, my wife and I will be celebrating our anniversary on a cruise. So if you, if that does take place and I am not there, it's not because I, I don't want to be there, I am unable to attend, but please feel free to call me or email me with any of your questions, concerns, and hopefully there'll be another forum that I can express my, my views on the city and answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, we're going to break for public service announcement. When we get back, the incumbent, Brian Peschel, will be with us, stay with us, thanks Joe.
You bet, thank you.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, boarded-
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stayed in Kibbutz, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here, I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential, trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh, Tony Palmieri here, and I'm joined by co-host Ben Schneider. You know him from the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. And we are interviewing candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. There are 14 of those candidates, and there's a primary coming up on February 15th that everyone has to go out and vote for, and we are very pleased to be joined in this segment by the, one of the incumbents, Brian Peschel. Brian, thanks for being here.
Thank you, pleased to be invited.
Now, with all the stress and the conflict and the controversies, why is Brian Peschel running for reelection?
Well, I said two years ago that I would try to protect the city tax dollar. I've tried to do that, we may lose that a lot of votes when we still try. I could have stepped out and continued to be a loser in our five to two votes or some of the votes that happened, but the fight me said to keep going, and hopefully some things can change in future years, and people told me to keep running, so I'm trying again.
Well, let's ask you a, a series of questions that, you know, we'll get some yes or no's, we'll get them in. Up till now, you have voted against using any taxpayer money for Riverside Park. Would you, would you continue to vote no on using taxpayer money for that project?
Well, as far as, I voted no so far because I enjoyed the, the donation from the Leach Company was great, and I felt I could have been fine with that, all the other stuff I didn't think was needed. Now that it's gonna be, it's being built and is, as they say, half or three-fourths of being done at this time, I will do my best as a council member to make it be, hopefully, a goldmine for the city of Oshkosh. It may take some spending, once we find out who the promoter is and who's gonna get concessions and those things, but I mean, I was against it all along. If I am reelected and hopefully when I'm reelected, I will do my best for progress to happen because you do have to spend something if it's gonna be a goldmine.
Okay, and you did obviously vote against waiving the bid.
Yes, I did, uh, I, I worry about even opening by Memorial Day just because of waiving the bids that the, the proposals are out for promoters and concessions and everything that we don't even have back yet. And I didn't think another few weeks or maybe one more month would have hurt the situation for bids. And if they, if C.R. Meyer has such a love for that place, let their bid fall, and hopefully they still would have been the lowest bid, and that's just the reason I voted no on that.
Uh, where do you stand on closing the Pollock Pool, should it be closed?
I'd love to see it reopen. Um, I had people contact me from a local group in Oshkosh that wanted to hold a type of a fundraiser. The funds that they would have raised would have hopefully taken care of it for one or two years. And I approached the city parks director and told them what I had going forth, and they pretty much said, well, as far as to start the pool up the same way as it was, tell them to hold off with their fundraiser unless they like to have a fundraiser that would maybe be foreign type of an aquatic center, could be smaller, but at least that might draw more people.
Okay, uh, the, the cigarette ban in restaurants, you were one of the people that supported that.
In the beginning, yes, I did.
Now, now what's your view on banning smoking in restaurants?
Not a chance until, because it's done by the state of Wisconsin. There's too many areas that just don't make it work out, that, uh, too many communities, I mean, people today from years ago, you see the difference in vehicles on the highway. Years ago, people stayed hometown, these days, it's nothing for someone to drop, drop on the highway and go to Appleton, go to Fonalec, go to, I'll say Amro, go across the lake. It's nothing anymore, years ago, people didn't do that that much, and until it's done statewide, I mean, I look at it this way, that you could maybe have, well, you could have the best rock and roll place in town. And what happens if next week the city takes a vote and they tell you, can't have rock and roll anymore, you gotta have poker music?
But what changed? You voted for this originally.
I did, what changed was the way it came about, um, from the citizens and as far as the slamming or backstabbing of the different groups putting out the posters for it and the mailings. I didn't think that was right, and I knew it was gonna hurt them in the end, and as I see it, did the one group, which there's no more Festival of Trees because there's a lot of local sponsorship behind that. I tried making it one possibly when I was for it, where the four or five restaurant owners had asked me to try to make it where for two months they took the ashtrays off the table and still could smoke at the bars. And they didn't, that didn't pass at all, so I lost in that nature. But yes, I, I admitted I made a mistake at that time with how much I was led down the path of my first time on the board, and, and I always make mistakes, but I came back since that one, and then as I said even on this show previously, it was, I was a two-time loser because then we lost in the referendum again.
Did you want to say something on that?
Well, I was gonna follow up, so you're, basically it's a rookie mistake, you're, you're-
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
We're electing a mayor, as you know, for the first time in 50 years. I, I believe you think the mayor should have veto power, is that right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I've talked to you about possibly putting a boycott on Federal Signal, and you've said that you might suggest that, where are you now on that?
I still have the same paperwork that you sent me from up in Appleton, and, uh, I know that right now, I don't believe anything would happen, and I hope that with this election, that maybe we'll see some change in the city council and can get some support for some situations like that.
Something like that, okay.
As far as, it's, it's sad for the Leach Company, I mean, and, and I, I support them all the way. I wish there were other jobs they could have, which I hope they can have jobs.
So, so you do support the boycott, but you're just not bringing it forward at this time?
I, from people that, when I talked about it, at the one time of, uh, an open forum, whatever, and even from when I talked to Tony at South Park about it, I, that, I just, my own heart down feeling was that it would lose like anything else.
But would you support it? I mean, if, if there was, if, if the vote came up to boycott Federal Signal products at the council level, would you support it, yes or no?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, yes, okay.
Oh, yes.
Um, what about walking a picket line with strikers? Let's say there's people on strike and you support, you're a union guy, right?
Yes, I am, I'm a CWA member for, out of SBC.
All right, do you think the elected officials should walk on a picket line if they believe in the strike?
If they believe in it and, and feel for those people, I mean, you need, I need their support just as well as they need mine, and, uh, I don't have a problem doing that and hope that if I can't walk, that I can send a couple cases of soda or something out there that they need support.
How about that five-minute rule, do you support that five-minute rule? Should it be maintained?
I think it's a good rule, um, as far as should be kept. I don't know if there's any other way to have it be better than that, um, but it's, and as far as, uh, I don't know if people should maybe have their topics turned into the city before that, but, uh, I think it's a good rule for five minutes that people can come up and talk about things that, I mean, face it, I work out of town 40 to 45 hours a week.
Right.
So if people can come up to the podium, yeah, they call you at home all the time, but as far as give you new ideas that maybe you didn't know about, I think it's great.
Currently, the citizens can't address agenda items in those citizen statements, should that be changed?
I wish it would, I can tell you before I was on the council, I got burned by that one night. I came in late to a meeting and I walked up there at the podium and started talking, and I got shut down right then, and I just liked the open communication bit that, as far as, you know-
Well, I think if anyone should get the last word, it should be the citizens and not the elected officials. You guys work for us.
Sure.
Right?
I don't have a problem with it at all.
One more question before we turn it over to Ben. What, Brian, do you think is the major issue facing the city right now?
Right now, I'd say the major issue is as far as the city, as far as wants to redevelop downtown, which two years ago I said the same thing, it can be done, but it has to be done slower. To spend a lot of money to do it doesn't need to be done. I give you one example that I say was the first, in my mind, a start of progress this last summer by the group downtown of the bid board. And as far as I said before, you have to spend somebody to make things happen. You look at the six or seven different Friday nights that the bid board put the theater at the Opera House Square Park, and they had excellent turnouts every Friday night of people under blankets and the chairs or whatever, and some of the stores stayed open till nine o'clock. I don't believe that costed a lot of money to get people downtown and was a start in the right direction.
Yeah, that was fun, uh, Ben? You're, you're obviously a, a two-year incumbent, seeking reelection. In your, in your two years on the council, what are, what are some of the accomplishments that you've, that you're most proud of?
Oh boy, let's see, I haven't really thought about that, um, I guess just as far as the one accomplishment is that people have called me and always said that as far as, you know, we call you because you're the guy that's out there in the public that will answer our questions compared to, as I still say, being a common person compared to being a quote-unquote politician. And to try to always, um, think of the little guy. I, I lost a situation when we had just about a month ago with the new apartment builders are gonna be by the Pearl, Wisconsin Avenue area, that as far as we're building big complexes, and I'd voted for so-called little guy that rents, owns maybe three apartment houses in the city of Oshkosh, rents them out, and you build these big places, and who knows? Those people pay a lot of tax dollars to the city, and it's, it's like you say, it's not accomplishment because we lost, but just trying to protect the little guy out there that's the everyday citizen of Oshkosh and can't afford everything.
So in a sense, when you're the minority, it's, it's almost like you just bring the awareness, and you hope to continue to bring the awareness until your point of view prevails, until you're in majority position. Along those lines, what, what are some things that you've, you've regretted in your two years on the, on the council?
Uh, the first one was the, the smoking deal that I said I made a mistake on loud and clear with everything that happened, and, uh, that was one regret, um. The other regret is, as, no ma-, no matter who gets on the council, if it's myself, which I hope it is, or if it's the new, a new person getting on the council, think through everything you do, no matter if one or two councilmen tell you, you know, to come this way, come this way, because sooner or later you may get burned by that. I, and I learned that way by the smoking situation, uh, that, that, and I don't have any regrets of the person who I was involved with. I thought everything was going that way, the right way, and then when it started getting the advertisements and everything, I was like, wow, I was getting led down the wrong path. So I just let everyone, same thing, that keep your eyes all over the place if you can because you gotta be yourself.
Before we get to a final statement, you voted against the budget, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, um, 5.7% in taxes, that's too high.
Well, it was too high because as, um, fellow councilman Esslinger had tried to do where all the non-salary positions in the city got at least a 2.5% raise across the board, they all have other adders that could go up to 3, 4, 4.5%, and Mr. Esslinger tried to put a freeze on it 3%, which, like I say, I don't want to hurt any person in the job they do and the salary they make, but if we'd have cut it at 3%, it would have saved a ton, would have been a start, and as far as if we could have started there, there might have been different things we could have seen after that.
All right, just quickly, uh, just quickly, yes or no? If you would have, if you would have cut those assumptions on the salary and it was still 5.7%, would you have supported the budget?
No, because I believe there are other things that could be done also.
All right, all right, Brian, in the time we have left, I want you to look into camera three. Tell people why they should vote for you for reelection.
Thank you, Tony, I'd ask people in the city of Oshkosh for your vote again. Two years ago when I sat here, I asked for your vote then to try to protect your tax dollar. I know that things raised and the tax will go up, I try to protect it as much as I can so you can still enjoy the necessities of life and enjoy your living in Oshkosh as I have all my life, and just keep, keep our services going with the intercourse services of the city of the, your firemen, your police, your sanitation pickup, and just everything that happens in the city that you do live in the best city around of Oshkosh.
And if people want to reach you?
Uh, they can call me at 920-231-4581, or my email address, which is 7pin@ameritech.net.
All right, we want to thank Brian Peschel for taking the time to be here. We're gonna take another public service announcement. When we get back, our own Cheryl Hens will join us to tell us why she should be elected to the Oshkosh Common Council. Stay with us, thanks Brian.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, boarded-
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in the forced labor camps.
If I stayed in Kibbutz, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, you're dead. You speak your mind, you're dead.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing, no money, no English.
America stood for freedom, it stands for freedom, and that's why all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Here, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here, I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential, trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her healthcare costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, healthcare referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Welcome back to Eye on Oshkosh, Tony Palmieri here with guest host Ben Schneider, and we've been interviewing candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. And now we're joined by Cheryl Hens, who, we have to ask you first, Cheryl, what's it like being interviewed on your own show?
It's a little strange.
A little disorienting, isn't it?
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, very much so. Well, we have to ask you, uh, why are you running for the Oshkosh Common Council?
Well, I, I think anyone who regularly watches this show knows that I have been becoming increasingly frustrated with what I see from our current city council. You know, vote after vote after vote, they seem to have little disregard, or little regard for our money. And I think it's time that we have some changes.
All right, now, many of our viewers, I'm sure, already know your views on some of these things. Let's just like quick run through them.
Sure.
You're against the use of taxpayer money for Riverside Park.
Well, in the manner in which it's been done, yes. I mean, I, quite honestly, I'm all for public-private partnerships as long as they're done properly and responsibly.
And you don't think that that's happened here?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
So you, and you would not have voted to waive that bid?
No, no, that was one of the most irresponsible things that I have seen of late from this council.
Actually, back to the taxpayers' dollars and the amphitheater. In what manner do you think that the partnership could have worked in which you would have supported it?
Well, first of all, there should have been some public buy-in. I mean, the way this was pushed through, it went through, Ben, in about three weeks' time. I mean, the council got it in their packets on a Friday. It was at a workshop that following Tuesday, and two weeks later at the council meeting, it was voted on. That's two and a half weeks, that is far too fast to push a project of this magnitude through. There should have been some more time done for the council to get their questions answered. You know, some of these council members asked questions that they never got answers to, and yet they voted to support it. And so there should have been more time spent for the council getting answers, and there should have been more time spent for the public to have input, and therefore I think you would have had more public buy-in. And there should have been more time done, allowed for fundraising for this project.
What is your view on the Pollock Pool, should that close?
No, it should not close, that was a gift to the city. Mayor Harris always talks about how we shouldn't bite the hand that gives to us and donates to us, and yet they have treated this gift terribly, and, and now they're probably gonna just close it up or do whatever with it.
But is that, is, is maintaining that pool worthy of a tax increase? If, let's say we had to raise taxes for that, would you do it?
Yes, for that I would.
All right, uh, the cigarette ban in restaurants, you're, you're against the ban, right?
I'm, I'm not in favor of the ban, no. I'm not a smoker, but I'm not in favor of that ban.
Because you think it's a private business prerogative?
I do.
All right, uh, you know we're electing a mayor, uh, the mayor will not have veto power. Should the mayor have veto power?
He absolutely, or she absolutely should, yes.
Uh, because of spending?
I, I think for a lot of issues, but certainly spending, I think, is one of the biggest issues facing us right now. But the ma-, we need to have a strong mayor.
Uh, where do you stand on the issue of possibly boycotting Federal Signal products? As you know, they did in Appleton, should we do that in Oshkosh?
I believe we should.
Okay, uh, what do you feel about a council member walking a picket line with strikers? Is that appropriate?
I think it is, if, if, um, I, I would if I felt that strongly about an issue. I, I would.
Okay, uh, what about this five-minute rule? Do you support, or should we maintain the five-minute rule?
I think the five-minute rule is good, um, you know, in my profession, I cover politics in other cities, and they're much more stringent with their five minutes. I mean, when you're, they'll sit there with a stopwatch, the clerk has a stopwatch. When your time is up, your time is up and you have to sit down, whether you're mid-thought or not. This council, that is one thing I'll say for it, they are very lenient and, and understanding. So I, I think it should be maintained, there's, rarely are there times when someone can't get their message across in five minutes or less.
Right, um, however, the citizens currently cannot address agenda items in that citizen statement, should they be able to?
I, I think they should, it, I don't know where that ever came from or how that came to be or who started it, but it seems to me that it's there, and this is just my own feeling on it, but it seems that they don't want citizens to come back and, and kind of smack them around a little bit for votes that they've taken earlier. In other words, having the last word during that particular meeting. Granted, you can come back at the next meeting and talk about it, but by then, you know, cooler heads maybe prevail.
Well, I don't think, I don't personally think elected officials should ever get the last word.
No.
Because they work for us, not the other way around.
Exactly, it's our government.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Ben in a second, but before I do that, what, what Cheryl do you think is the major issue facing the city right now?
I think irresponsible spending and the budget, those are the two, and they're sort of tied in- Those are the two, and they're sort of tied in, of course, but I think those are the two things.
All right. Ben?
You opened by indicating that you felt it was time for a change. What should change?
Well, we've got, a lot of things should change, Ben. We need to get some people with some common sense on this council. We see far too many times that the people's interests are being overlooked and bypassed for special interests or developers, what have you. And that just has to come to an end. We have to, I'm all for development, and I'm all for spending if it's done responsibly and in a planned manner. And that's the biggest thing that I see wrong with this council right now. They are not looking at those things the way the majority of citizens in this city want them looked at. They're not hearing what we're saying.
Oh, go ahead. The city, the common council recently approved a 5.7% tax increase that we all got on our tax bill in December. Would you have supported a 5.7% tax increase?
I, no, not the way it was put forth. I mean, look at the things that we've done, Ben. We are closing municipal pools, we're turning out streetlights, yet we're putting up multimillion-dollar amphitheaters that we haven't even seen a tax increase for. We'll get that next year. And at the same time, we're putting decorative lighting on bridges. We're turning out streetlights, but putting decorative lighting on bridges. Now, this is the most asinine thing I've ever seen. It's ridiculous.
Well, if it was done, if the budget was constructed in a more pragmatic manner in which, the manner in which the community perhaps have provided, have more buy-in, do you think if all those things were done to address the concerns expressed, do you think a 5.7% increase is reasonable?
I can't honestly answer that, Ben, because, you know, I have not yet seen the budget book, per se. And I would be just blow and smoke up your pant leg if I tried to answer that. I want, I'm not trying to dodge the thing. I just, I first this week asked for a budget book, so...
Cheryl, I was reading a Lake Winnebago B2B, you know, Sean Fitzgerald's magazine, and he wrote an article about this group, Progress Oshkosh. And they claim that they're bothered by what they refer to as a loosely organized negative influence that's made its way into newspaper letters to the editor and citizen comments in public meetings. I think they're talking about people like you.
Probably.
You know, the whole cobblestoner thing. You wear that label proudly, though, don't you? What does that mean to you, the cobblestoner?
Well, I think it's a slap in the face of the majority of people in this community by a newspaper.
You think the majority are the cobblestoners?
I do.
Which means, wow, what are they? Rickman thinks it's people who are against everything. Against the library, against the amphitheater.
Yeah, against any kind of progress, anything progressive, I think. He thinks that people who are against progress are cobblestoners. You know, I mean...
But you're not against progress.
No, I'm not.
So what is progress for you?
Well, progress is moving forward. It's having jobs. It's people having insurance. It's building our city. It's having a vibrant downtown like so many communities around us. But it's doing it responsibly. You know, that's the key, responsibly. And we haven't seen any of that. You know, what do I think about, you know, the cobblestoners? Yeah, I do think that the majority of citizens are cobblestoners. When the library referendum was put on the ballot, that failed miserably. I mean, the majority of people did not want that. And so, yeah, I think the majority of people in this city are cobblestoners. I don't think any of us are against progress. We just want people to be responsible about how they're spending our money.
Sure. Ben?
Do you get the sense that the common council, well, judging by your responses, it seems like the common, you feel that the common council votes a certain way that the majority of the taxpayers want them to vote? Is that a fair statement?
Wait, can you say that again?
The common council votes one way, but it appears that the majority of the community feels another way. And why do you think that is? Why do you think that five members of the common council voted to spend $930,000 to buy contaminated property on CP Avenue when, in my opinion, if that was put on a referendum, it would have failed miserably?
I don't know why that is. I can't speak for the Fab Five as they're affectionately known. I have no idea. All I know is I would not be voting for things like that in the manner that they have come forward.
But the Fab Five, as you refer to them as, they would argue that they're showing leadership. That, you know, Ben's right. If you put a $950,000 item on a referendum, the taxpayers are going to vote it down. They're not going to vote to spend that money. But doesn't leadership require voting for things that the public might vote down because as an elected official, you're looking into the future? What do you say to that?
Well, I agree. I don't think that you can put every single thing on a referendum because look at all the money we'd be spending in a referendum. But I do think that you can at least hear what the people have to say. You know, again, were the people really given ample opportunity to talk about whether or not they wanted to spend nearly a million dollars on a piece of contaminated land? And, you know, how much remediation needed to be done in order to make that ready for an amphitheater?
I do, by the way, Cheryl, we're getting close to the end here. I do have to ask you one question, because people have actually asked me this in the community. If you are elected, will you stay as host of Eye on Oshkosh? I've actually had several people ask me that.
Provided that the state elections board does not have a problem with it, you know, violating any kind of state election laws, yes, I will.
Okay. Would the show change at all if you were an elected official?
No, I really don't see that it would. I mean, right now, any council member or the mayor has the ability to talk to the media anytime they want about anything, and this is my way of talking to the public through my own show, which is the media also, so...
Because I was thinking of using it kind of like as a town hall forum if you're an elected official.
Sure. I mean, obviously, I wouldn't be able to discuss, you know, closed-session meeting things, but I'm not privy to that now anyway, so...
Actually, if I was sitting at home right now, and actually under delayed taping, or watching the show, I might think, boy, this would be an advantage that someone that has a show, they probably obtain a lot of feedback. You have online polls. How do you feel that having this show, what type of qualifications you think you bring to the common council or would bring to the common council as a result of your involvement in covering other political arenas and just being a host of this show for several years?
Well, I think, I think the level of what I bring is very wide-ranging, you know? We've created a forum for people to get their views heard and their messages out there. We have tried to be responsive to people. People have come to us with different things that they were complaining about, and we would try and get those things resolved. I think I bring a lot of things to the table.
Cheryl, we've got a minute left. Why don't you tell people why they should vote for you on February 15?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It is strange being on this side of the table. But I have given almost 12 years of public service to this community through service in the Board of Appeals, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Grand Opera House Advisory Board. I have a history of doing my homework and taking every issue seriously. I've never made a vote on any issue that I didn't think was done in the best interest of the majority of the people that I serve. I possess common sense, not just for the commoner, but for the entire city. And I think we need a change, and with the right people on this council, we can accomplish that. And I do ask for your vote of support and your vote of confidence on Tuesday, February 15.
And we do have Cheryl's contact information up there on the screen. And I do hope everyone goes to eyeonoshkosh.com and tonypalmieri.com for more information about these races. I want to thank Cheryl and Melanie Bleckel for asking me to host. It's been fun. It's been thrilled to be here with Ben Schneider. He's asked some great questions, and he and I will interview more council candidates, I believe. And until then, for Cheryl and Ben, I'm Tony Palmieri, hoping you'll join us again next time for another edition of Eye on Oshkosh. Take care.